Okay, the meeting is now being recorded. We are live streaming to Facebook.
Has joined the meeting.
The meeting is yours.
Thank you. Thank you Roger very much. I would at this time like to call to order the regular meeting of June 11th of the Stonington Board of Police Commissioners. For those who can see me on the screen, please join to for a pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the United States of America.
Has left the meeting.
To the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we proceed with remarks from the public, I have some remarks that I would like to make as Chairman of the Police Commission. I know people have come and gone, so just to kick off, we have on the line Commissioner Turner. With me is Commissioner O'Shaughnessy. We have Chief Stewart and we have Captain Olson in the room with me as well. Are there any other Commissioners on the line currently? Before we get started, I wish to speak to the events that have captured the headlines over the last several weeks. That is excessive use of force by police. I want to be very clear, neither unnecessary nor discriminatory use of force will be tolerated by this Board of Police Commissioners nor this Police Department. We stand proudly with the Chiefs of Police across the state and the nation who denounce excessive and inappropriate use of force. The Stonington Police Department has policies in place and instills in our training practices that put a priority on de-escalating tense situations before resorting to the use of force. Every day our officers go into the field, walking into situations that can turn dangerous in a second. However, the article in Sunday's London Day that reports that of the nine complaints filed against Stonington Police Officers in the last two and a half years, more than half were initiated internally for failing to follow procedure and none were for excessive use of force. The department is community focused. For years, there's been a close working relationship with the Superintendent of Schools and the Town's Department of Human Services. On a typical month, the department may receive as many as half a dozen letters of thanks and appreciation for the way our officers have responded to calls and the empathy they have shown. The department has also been proactive in promoting positive relations with its constituents well before the recent events that dominate the news today. I highlight a couple. Coffee with the Chiefs, which is a public forum for community members to speak directly to the Chief of Police, to voice concerns and get a response as to why or when certain actions may be taking place. Recently bedtime stories have been read by officers to our young children on the department's Facebook page during the COVID-19 lockdown. We have instituted a chaplain's program to assist those struck by tragedy, to help family members cope emotionally and on a practical level following a death or a traumatic incidents. Youth officers who regularly meet and interact with school age members of our community promoting our women, excuse me, of our community promoting our women and men in uniform as people they can turn to and not be afraid of. These are programs which were initiated within the department and not imposed upon its members. Now, no organization is perfect and we have dismissed personnel and we have made adjustments to policies and practices as situations dictate. However, this is a department that truly cares about this community and we as the Board of Police Commissioners are proud of the work they do. Thank you. With that, I would like to open the meeting to remarks of the public. Are there any members of the public who have something they'd like to say which is not going to be covered on the agenda already? If so, please speak up and state your name.
Hi, this is June Strunk and I do have a comment to make. I would just like to express my support for our Police Department and thank you, thank them for their service and for keeping us safe. It's just this, that's all I need to say. Just a very sincere thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, remarks of the public? Okay, moving on. See, I'm looking, do we have either Commissioner Elmer or Tabor on the line? Not yet. Very well, new business, planning and zoning, special use permit application regarding the expansion of the existing Masonic Temple 637 Pequot Trail, Stonington. Is there anybody from the public to speak on this point? I know this was, nobody on the public to speak on this representing the Masonic Temple.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if you look the plans over, that's a big piece of property up on Pequot Trail.
Yep.
You know, right before Farm Home Road and next to, just to the west, you know Frankie Drive, a lot of property. It looks like they're going to improve the building and plenty of room in there. So I didn't really see any issue with traffic or safety or parking and it looks like they're doing everything that they needed to there.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
I took a look at that property and I agree with the chief said, I don't see any problem parking or safety. No major changes to entrance or exits onto the state road.
Very well. Commissioner Turner?
I just had a quick question. I was up there today. Is this the same building that they referred to as the Grange?
It's the Grange, yes it is.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to pass, well, to pass along our comments that we see no negative impact on traffic, parking or safety?
I'll make that motion, Commissioner O'Shaughnessy.
Commissioner O'Shaughnessy makes a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Turner, second. In favor? Opposed? All right, just to double check, there's no other Commissioners on the line? Very well. All right, traffic. Like to throw in one traffic item ahead of what's on the agenda. We, just this afternoon, got a request from the high school for a parade slash procession to go from the high school to Old Mystic Village with the graduation class honoring social distancing down Route 1 to Flanders Road to Cherry Brown Road, weather permitting to happen either on the 19th or the 20th. I think we need to have this as a voted item?
Vote, vote to add it to the agenda then vote on its merits.
Do I hear a motion to add this item to the agenda?
I think that motion.
Commissioner O'Shaughnessy makes a motion. Commissioner Turner, do I hear a second? Very well, the item has been added to the traffic agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve this parade procession? Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
I make that motion that we prove it based on as long as the concerns of the chief are met with procession.
All right, the motion has been made to approve it, subject to approval of the administration. Do I hear a second? Second from Commissioner Turner. Are there any other Commissioners on the line? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion is approved. Next traffic item, Route 201 at Olivia Passing Zone. This was something that was, came up last month and is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this? I know a local resident brought this to our attention that right at the intersection of Olivia and 201, it was concerned that cars were passing and possibly causing a danger pedestrians and vehicles pulling out of Olivia Drive. There was some correspondence that went back and forth between the state and the chief. Perhaps Chief, you'd like to speak to it?
Well, I sent it to the state DOT for them to take a look based on, which I think everybody's assumption that Olivia Lane was a town road. The caveat with the state to make any changes is that if it is a town road, intersecting road, they would certainly take a look and take whatever appropriate action. Seeing that it is not at this time a town accepted road, it basically deferred. So they're not going to do anything with that until the town accepts the road and I do not know whether the town has, usually that's a process to go through from planning and zoning, Board of Selectmen, et cetera, to accept a road. And I'm not sure whether that was part of the planning and zoning plan many, many years ago to have that part of our, I guess, our mileage for town approved roads. So as it stands right now, that road is still owned by whoever developed the property and has not been turned over to town. So hence DOT will make no change.
Okay, so, thank you. Chief, why don't you continue on down property at Stanton Lane and Willow Street?
That was one of the Commissioners mentioned, I believe Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, the last month, a month before, about coming out of Stanton Lane out to Willow. There was a sightline issue. So I wrote a letter to the property owner who happened to be in Florida. They came back and that, happy to say, as they immediately addressed it with actually a lot of thanks to the Commission and everybody for their request to make Stanton Lane one way and they seemed pretty happy with that. So they took care of it.
Oh, great. Okay.
It's all set.
Terrific. Sinage for Hartford Healthcare. I know there was some back and forth on that.
So I think that was just more of an approval on your end to say, okay, we're good with it.
Yep.
I'm not sure that they have enlarged it yet, but I think that they're in the process.
It's in the works, so, okay. Cultural Street, trouble with parking and traffic flow. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Okay. It appears as though we got a request from somebody who thought that mirrors would be aiding the flow of traffic as people pulled out?
I think that one of the things that we wanted to do was talk to, have that person contact us briefly and see exactly what their concern is because we've got a second hand report of this.
Right.
We reached out to the first select woman and asked to have those people contact, have they contacted us, Chief?
Has a request been made for them to do that?
I believe it was.
In the email, yes.
First select woman's office to, it was mostly with internally within the area, kind of what the process was for convex mirrors. So you actually see a memo that came out in 2010.
Right.
From obviously previous Board of Police Commissioners that having to do with convex mirrors and sort of the, what the policy of the Board of Police Commissioners that time on when, when, where, how they would do these mirrors around town because there was a bunch of them popping up. With mirrors such as that, you always have to be concerned about where they are from a point of view. It's the sun hit them or headlights hit them that creates a different problem.
Yep. There's also distortion with those just by their nature. So objects may be closer than they appear.
Right, absolutely.
And I note that Commissioner Elmer has joined the meeting at this point.
Share my apologies to you and to the fellow Commissioners.
That's fine, thank you. We are, for your reference, we are on, just finishing up traffic item 4D as in David. So there's no action required on that at this point. 4E, commercial vehicles, trucks traveling on residential roads. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this? Okay, there was some email traffic back and forth. The, as long as the traffic is considered local, truck traffic is my understanding. There's, there's no way we can have a prohibition against their travel on, on the town roads.
Well, my understanding of truck is, is if you're going through one town, coming from one town through a town to a third town, that, that then local traffic authorities in the state could prohibit trucks on local roads. But you don't have that in this particular case on Hewitt Road. You have basically the, the work being done on Miss Tuxed Avenue for the water line. So the trucks are leaving there and going.
So it was those, it was those particular trucks.
Those particular trucks. So just for reference, you can see those signs, the ones that stick out my mind are West Vine and West Arch Street in Parketuck by the, by the elementary school. They were put in in the 1970s because you had Romanella's gravel pit in North Stonington. They came through Stonington on those streets, over the bridge into Westerly, Rhode Island, the third town, to Shrenzie pit. So you had from one town, North Clinton, through Stonington to Westley. So hence Stonington could prohibit trucks on those particular roads.
Got it.
With the permission of DOT. So that's, this doesn't apply. So I don't think there's anything we can do to stop truck traffic on there.
No.
What I think that there, the residents complaint is, is that especially with work being done on Route 27 right now with water lines and et cetera. So if you're a truck driver and you are in the Old Mystic Village area in Nora and you want to go to Big Y or somewhere out on Route 1 or back to Stonington in some way, or Mason's Island even, your GPS will take you, you know, basically through the woods to get to that.
Right.
And you end up on some of these back or side streets that usually don't see truck traffic as frequently as they, they are right now. And that does create some, some issues with that, I mean, it's a new traffic. So we certainly understand that. We've had officers out on that road already.
Yep.
We have our radar sign out there right now as well.
Okay.
So we've.
Yeah, I think speed was an element of her concerns.
Yep, absolutely.
There's no sidewalks. It's just for in front of the condos, that's the only place you sidewalk.
Right, okay. All right. The last item under traffic is item F, Mechanic Street. Is there anybody who cares from the audience who cares to speak to this point? So Chief, I understand you had a meeting with one of the residents and they wanted to have some drive like your kid sign put up?
Again, we have our, another radar sign posted down there. That went up either this morning or yesterday. We had to charge them to get them out in the sun. So we have them out right now. So there's one there. Her, her thing was that she wanted to lower the speed limit. So our conversation basically said, well, let's get the data first. So let's see what the speed sign has to say as far as the average speeds, et cetera. You know, if we're seeing something that's really out of whack when it comes to speed or whatever, then we can certainly take a look at that.
All right.
And see what goes in there. So I also said that we do not set the speed limit. That used to be the old traffic administration from the state of Connecticut. They'd send engineers out and that is, not that I would think they would do it, I said, but it was a double bit sore to the extent that if the state comes out and does some kind of survey, they have in the past on rare occasions raised the speed limit, not lowered it. And I'm not quite sure if you lower the speed limit there that your speeding problem is going to be solved. Is it just not, is it just not? We're going to put Commissioner Tabor on speakerphone right now, if that's okay, Bob.
Yeah, I'm going to have to deal with it. It won't accept the numbers that I put in. It says the meeting hasn't started yet, or it's an inaccurate number.
All right, we'll leave you on speakerphone for right now. It's okay.
Let the record show that Commissioner Tabor has just joined the meeting by phone.
I think part of the issue is this time of year, the mariners are all opening up and you're getting additional traffic on that road and on Mechanic Street due to the opening of the marinas. So it's probably an increase in traffic for that.
So, so one of the marina owners down there, lived there for a lot of years, died recently, passed away a few years ago and he used to call every time this time of year that, that I just want to tell you about, to complain about the increase in traffic and, and speed on the road. And he'd always call and say, can you get the officers out there, run a little radar because they're, they're going too fast. So that's where we've been down there and outside. We'll have more data. The question will remain is whether the Board of Police Commissioners would want me to recommend to the state of Connecticut, DOT to come out and reevaluate the speed limit.
Right.
So.
So let's get the data and then we'll take a look at it.
Look at it again.
All right. Commissioner Tabor, we're just finishing up traffic item F as in Frank.
All right.
So, okay, on to old business. This is an item that has been tabled a couple of times. A truck sign on William Street is Ms. King or any of the neighbors in the William Street, Parketuck area around 60 William Street. Are they on the line?
What I recommend, one more month that we'll, we'll send her a letter and ask her to please sign on or come to the next meeting.
Yeah.
And then.
And we'll table this one more time to the next.
We're supposed to get some information from the neighbors?
Yeah, she was going to poll the neighbors and see how they felt about a sign or signs.
So we haven't, granted, we've been in the middle of lockdown.
Yeah.
All fairness to her.
Agreed. Okay. Onto approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion, Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, to approve the minutes of the May 14th regular meeting?
I make a motion to approve the May 14th regular meeting of the Board of Police Commissioners, Stonington Board of Police Commissioners.
All right, the motion has been made. Commissioner Elmer has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Let me just do a roll call so it's easier to understand who is on and who's off. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner? Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Motion passes. Report of the Chief of Police?
In your packet, we have a variety of different things. Before I get going too, too much in there, I want to just bring to your attention, this past week on, I think it was June 3rd, 4th and 7th, police officers here in Stonington have responded to those related calls where Narcan was delivered three times to individuals that were in, having great difficulty and who knows what was going to happen. And all three are here right now, not here, but here to talk about.
They survived.
Survived. So officers did a great job this past week with that. We also have had a lot of people in Mystic, as we're well aware. And we've had officers down there talking with people, working with the community, a lot of understanding and a lot of dialogue back and forth with, with everybody.
With the protests.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so obviously the, we appreciate every, everybody being out there and what they have to say and also what the, the officers that went down and were a part of that and became, you know, ingrained in that and what went on. So it's certain, certainly appreciated.
I just like to say that, Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, I went down there two, two days to observe the protest and the officers did a fantastic job down there. They both do research.
Great.
Great. Did a tremendous job and they should be nice for that.
Theodore Ladwig.
Has joined the meeting.
So if you want to just stop, Teddy, you on now?
I'm on now, yes, I am. Thank you.
So you're, you're a little bit late, which is fine, but you're, you're here for the Grange, correct?
Masonic Temple.
That's the Masonic Lodge, that's right, yep.
It's good to go.
We passed along our comments that we see no negative impact on traffic, parking or safety.
Just a, just a brief comment. I had asked for a waiver of the traffic study on that. Do you see a problem with that waiver?
No. Well, I don't.
I don't.
Commissioner Tabor, do you see a problem waiving traffic study?
I do not, no.
Commissioner Elmer, do you see a problem waiving traffic study?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, I do not.
Commissioner Turner, do you see a problem waiving traffic study?
I do not.
So the Commission does not see a problem in waiving traffic study?
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that very much.
I'm in the, I'd like to just amend our, our original motion that, to add that to our original motion on that, that we are sending on to the zoning board.
All right. The motion has been made to go back and amend the comments that were made earlier under new business item 3A, expansion of the existing Masonic Temple to include the comments that include the statement that the Commission sees has no problem in waiving a traffic study. All in favor of that amendment? Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner?
Aye.
Very well. The, the motion has been amended. We'll move on, Chief, if you would continue with your chief, report of the chief.
Thanks.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but thank you, gentlemen, for accommodating me.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Stay healthy.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody, everybody stay healthy.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Just going down the list quickly, you have the budget report where, or obviously.
Theodore Ladwig.
So we're.
Has left the meeting.
Ninety percent through our budget and you can see that where we stand on a lot of our accounts, the, the good news is that we're, we're in the, in the positive right now and, and we expect to do that, especially in light of everything that's been going on. Our, you can see our monthly statistics, the amount of calls that were going up, things have started to have an uptick. Go to, really, this is based stats, so compared to April, et cetera, with, things have started to, we've had a lot more activity. The, the big one's been really disturbances that we had an uptick in going on, calls when it comes, comes to that, so.
Is there any common thread in those?
Some domestics and people out and about right now. Don't forget, the weather changed a little bit, so windows are open now and, and people are in their backyards and.
Yep, spreading their wings.
More people out, out and about. So continuing, you have your alarm report, the special event schedule. You have a memo from the Connecticut Law Enforcement Support Office having to do with basically, sort of a memo that we had to, had to agree to. We're probably going to be ending that particular program down the road in the near future just because of the amount of paperwork and the equipment that they've supplied to us is, is a really need. So there's no need for us to, to have some of the stuff that they have given us and we'll be, we'll be talking about that a little bit more later on down the road. But that was just one thing. It was more for an FYI to you guys. We have a letter designating the Police Department through the Governor's Executive Order to, to basically be the municipal designate when it comes to sector rules and enforcement. So that basically means that the Police Department is responsible if, if there's a violation of the executive order when it comes to social distancing, that type of stuff that's out there. But it seems to be going away, I've read it, read it this time. So it may be sort of a moot point, but it, it was something that came to us. You'll see an MOU in the packet between the high school or Stonington Public Schools and the UPD and that's a grant opportunity that the school is doing. It's a school violence prevention grant. So the MOU with the Police Department, so that's, that's in there. It's basically things that we do already. So it's more for your FYI, but we have in there both needed. So if you want, if you'd like to vote on that, then you've had a chance to review it. That way it's official that we have entered into this MOU with the School Department.
Okay. Okay. This was included in everybody's packet. I'm assuming everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, do I hear a motion to approve the MOU with the Stonington, so with the school department?
I make a motion that we approve the MOU with the Stonington Police Department with one caveat, and I believe that in the original MOU, it required 12 training sessions and we kind of looked at that and the chief thinks that two will be sufficient, two annual ones. Isn't there 12 in there?
It's gonna be go from monthly to semi-annual terms.
I think we changed it to even.
yearly?
Participate meetings with, with communication sharing scheduled as per, well, as planned. So it got away from the.
The original.
The, the number, just basically as, as needed.
So is that on the revised version?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay. So I make a motion that we accept the MOU or approve the MOU between the Stonings and Police Department and the school system, the Stonington School System that is passed out to the commission.
Under the Stop Narrative Program. All right. So Commissioner O'Shaughnessy's made the motion. Commissioner Tabor has seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed and just cut off the topic here, I think the reason I hadn't been able to, I don't know. I keep getting a notice and it says, "Meeting hosted by Roger, beginning at 7:00 PM to 7:30," but it has a current, the current or the first meeting data, meeting number expressed, and it, it blocks me out because it says that meeting has not started.
All right. Well, we got you now.
Well, by only my phone.
I believe, Bob, you may be on the executive session one.
No, I'm using, it says executive session, but I was using the data for the non-executive session.
Yeah, I, it doesn't work that way.
Different one.
So stick with the phone for now.
All right.
All right. So let's continue on with the report of the chief.
Under H policy update, if you look at chapter 3E, basically it's the off-duty firearms carry. So under section 2 in the last bullet, it always been that if you have off-duty firearm that you're going to carry, that you had to do the full qualification course, et cetera. That usually meant that officers had to buy their own ammo, do a variety of different things with that. So basically the, the new policy is that the certified firearms instructor will determine the course of fire and qualification standard for the demonstration of proficiency. So it just means that instead of having to maybe fire 120 rounds through a particular firearm, that it could be less than that. As long as it has shown proficiency and it's an approved weapon and ammunition by, by our certified instructors. So it just makes it more realistic for the, for the officers instead of to a larger scale.
So do I hear a motion to approve policy update, chapter 3E, section 2, off-duty firearms carry? Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
I make that recommendation.
Make that motion.
Motion, I'm sorry.
Motion. Commissioner Tabor, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Oh, wait a second. Let me, point of order. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, starting with Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Next item, policy update, chapter 3F, duty to intervene. Chief?
Obviously, we've talked about what's, what's been going on in many communities around the, around the, around the country. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about use of force, training, and then, and then sort of why this has come out. Now, use of force training, which is done usually by Sergeant Keith PB, Jeff Hughes, Ed Cullen, and Jeff Hughes and Rob Sundman, they teach a variety of things, including de-escalation, what, you know, what you should do, not do, how you go about doing that. And part of our training that we've had for a number of years and actually taught at the academy, I'll read verbatim from their lesson plan. It says, "Each officer is responsible for the actions of, for the other's action. If your partner is stepping over the line, you're required to stop him or be watchful if an officer is operating through a motion." So this has been taught to police officers for, for a long time in Stonington and I assume other communities about this, this duty to intervene that's out there and very appropriate. There's also federal case law that, that if you go back and look at some of the case law that's happened around the country over the years, there's been many cases where it's been brought forward with the duty of police officers to intervene and something like that, and especially if there's actions of another officer is a problem. This is something that under this new chapter of our existing use of force, we have not only the, the duty to intervene, but the chokehold, what's going on in the road with that, you have to, you have to look at that. That is something that has not been trained in our police academy, that it's not something that is part of our use of force, that is not something that our, our training officers have brought forward as something in the toolbox of our tool belt of a police officer to utilize in any, any way, shape, or form unless it's extreme dire circumstances where an officer's life or somebody else's life is really, really in trouble. It's not something that we would do on, on any type of the regular, unless extreme measures were, were there. So I know that the Board, the Post Council, which is our police academy, today had a meeting and they're going to make it part of their, six, their 16 policies that each police department in the state of Connecticut's required to have, such as pursuit policy, use of force, and a variety of other piles, policies, 16 of them. And we actually are audited on those 16 policies to ensure that they are in place. So we went through an audit about six months ago and everything was, was good. So they are about to come out with that each police department also, in addition to the use of force, the use of force has, has to have about the usage of chokeholds or prohibitive chokeholds and the duty to intervene. So being, trying to get it a little bit ahead and, and put that in right now, I think the sooner the better that we are, we are reacting to this in a very serious way. And that way, it's codified in our policy, not only in our, our training, it's been there, but, but also now in our policy. So with that, I would recommend that we move forward. I think it's a very appropriate.
So I see language here, 3F duty to intervene. Do we also have language on chokehold or is that forthcoming?
No, that was, that was sent to you.
Oh, that was, sorry, that's an updated one that I didn't get. My apologies. All right. Any discussion at this point? Any comments?
Just a question for the chief. Chief, is this brand new language or amended existing language?
It's new language that I borrowed from another PD that had recently put that into practice. And so I was able to get that and, and basically copy it down. It seems to be, I believe it's probably going to be what is going to come out for many of the police departments in the, in the state.
Any other thoughts? Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, do I hear a motion to approve the policy update, chapter 3E, section 2, excuse me, policy update, chapter 3F, duty to intervene slash de-escalation and use of force?
I make that motion.
Commissioner Tabor, do I hear a second?
Yes, you do. I'll make that second.
All right. Commissioner Elmer? Is there any, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Elmer, do, are your votes?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer? Commissioner Turner? All right. Motion has been made and approved.
Thank you, gentlemen. I, I believe this is something that is a, obviously stepping in a very good, good direction for, for a police department.
I think it just, as you say, it, it codifies what we've been practicing and preaching internally, but always helps to have it on the books.
Yes. Then we have under J, we received a letter from our 30-year-serving sergeant, Sergeant James McCaffrey, announcing his retirement a little bit later on in the year. So he's going to be with us through the summer, but he's going to leave us in, it looks like in November. So really actually needed a vote to accept his retirement. And then with that, I'd just make a comment that first thanking Jim for all his service here, 30 years. He worked, we worked together in detectives many years ago. He was a youth officer in town and, and came up as sergeant. He was with statewide narcotics for a number of years and been a, a part of the community and certainly wish him well when he does, does leave. But that does open up now a sergeant's position. With that, we can start to look at how we're going to fill that and when. And so the, so the commission should probably get ready that there's going to be some interviews of candidates down the road in the next couple of months to get ready for that position.
Very good. Do I hear a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Sergeant James McCaffrey?
Retirement.
Excuse, pardon me. I, thank you. I stand corrected. To accept the retirement letter of Sergeant James McCaffrey.
Please. I make that motion with the caveat that we send him a letter from, thanks from the Board of Police Commissioners for his years of dedicated service to the town of Stonington.
Excellent. Commissioner Tabor, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. So any, any discussion? The motion has been made and seconded to accept the retirement letter from Sergeant James McCaffrey with a, a letter from the Board of Police Commissioners thanking him for his tremendous service over 30 years. All in favor? Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner?
Aye.
Very well. Chief?
Youth officer assignment. It looks like we're, we're going to have another retirement in our youth officer, who's Officer Thomas Page, who's been with us a little over 25 years. We do not have a letter from Tom yet, but he's, an all indication is that he's going to leave us this summer. So we're, we're waiting for that. So in anticipation of that, we did a internal process of seeing who was interested in becoming the youth officer in town, because it's highly visible, it's in the schools, you're working with all the school department, you're dealing with the kids, the youth, but also investigating some of the major crimes that either children or kids commit or they're victims. So we had a series of interviews at the, at the PD last week and we're, I was so proud of every, every officer that came forward, what they had to say, what went on. We had Dr. Riley from Superintendent Schools here because such important person and role in the schools as well. So thank you to the captain. He sat in as well as Dr. Riley. And, and it was a real tough choice. There was, everybody came forward and like I said, very proud of everything that these officers have done and, and what they have to say. So I am, again, proud to really announce that Officer Carrie Manley Browning is our new youth officer and she is the first female youth officer in the history of the town of Stonington. And once we get a letter from Tom and we can figure out when, when he's actually going, she's already started some training with him to figure things out. She was with us on a call with the school department today. She'll be jumping right into that very important role.
That's great.
So I just wanted to let everybody know, know about that. And then under L, just sort of a cleanup of some stuff, a number of years ago, the commission also did the same thing. It's when a new police contract comes into play, sometimes there's things in there that also in a way affects the captain or myself, and one of them is longevity. So in the union contract, there's certain payments for longevity and how many years you're here, working for the town. So respectfully ask that the commission approve for the captain and myself, that same longevity language that, that the, that the rest of the officers have here.
I might add that it's, it's been policy in practice to have the administrations raises and mirror what's been negotiated by the rest of the force. So personally, I would speak up in favor of this, but I will ask for a motion from the vice chair to approve the longevity for the chief and the caption to match the union contract.
I make that motion.
And Commissioner Tabor? Commissioner Tabor to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, starting with the vice chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think that as far as my report goes, I always feel like I'm beginning something obviously. I think I feel I've forgotten something here again. But again, thank you to everybody that, the Board of Police Commissioners that have been in touch with us over the past couple of weeks and, and everything that's going on. It certainly is appreciated and, and your input into a variety of different community-related things that are going on and challenges and also good things that are going on in the community that, thanks to your support, we continue to work on and continue to do that. I'll just, one last thing I'll say is on the, on the side of our police cars, it has serve and protect, but also says partners with our community. In today's day and age, everybody needs to hear that, that we're here to be partners with our citizens.
Well, thank you, chief and captain, and, and thanks to the officers for being so sensitive and responsive to the needs of our community. Do I hear a motion to accept the report of the chief?
I make that motion.
Commissioner Tabor, do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Commissioner Tabor.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner?
Aye.
Very well. Onto consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda, Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
I make that motion.
Motion has been made. Do I hear a second? Commissioner Tabor?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner?
Aye.
Very well. We have a, do I hear a motion to, a motion to adjourn such that we may then enter into executive session?
I make that motion.
Commissioner O'Shaughnessy made it. Commissioner Tabor seconds it. All in, all in favor? Commissioner O'Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Aye.
Commissioner Elmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Turner?
Aye.
Very well. Roger, are we, please let us know when we're off the air.